Monday, November twenty first, two thousand twenty-two, six thirty-six P M. Order the Board of Trustees meeting. We have all board members present with the exception of Beth Ellis. Two by Zoom. And we will proceed. Public comments, any public comments at this point?
Yeah, public comments in the budget leader.
We will, yeah, okay.
Well. Tell you what I'm looking for here, I've noticed over recent years, basically since two thousand and five. And suggesting that the library number looks, and it's always fallen on deaf ears, it's pretty clear. But I keep saying it, but I'll be saying again, I've noticed I recently been spending as far as I can tell, at least as much money than maybe more on digital books. Not physical books, but people read a lot more physical books than digital. For a few years in this country. Digital books, ebooks were growing, that was just because they were cheap. And then once Apple got together with the publishers and raised prices. They increased additional book reading really stopped. And the vast majority of the books that people now buy are still physical books, not digital. It never made any sense at all for library. To spend a lot of money on digital books. Because the only reason to read a digital book is that it costs less. Libraries don't charge the books at all. Ever think about that? Yeah, the only reason to read or buy a digital book is a cheap one, but she is libraries are free. So it's never made any sense to likely to spend on digital books. Then there's the fact that additional books seem to cost you about twice as much. So anyway, I'm going to look at the budget again and see how much you're spending on each. Public comment section for when the budget maybe I'll say something about that, thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Okay, I guess we have no one else by Zoom. As far as the public. We will move ahead, we have a very full agenda. First item is our consent agenda, which includes the Board of Trustees minutes from the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Session, our income and expense year-to-date report through the end of October. And the fact that we had to cancel the study session for November third, two thousand twenty-two due to inclement weather and police advisory. Now I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I'll move, John.
David moves, second?
Second.
Okay, I got Lynn first, good try, Peter. Does anyone wish to remove or edit any of those items? If not, gonna ask for a vote, so if you're on mute, please unmute. Verbal, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Right here, all right, thank you. Anyone opposed, believe that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Claudine, we have a guest presentation. From Lori Graves with regard to the two thousand twenty-two point three compensation study.
Thank you, John, welcome Lori, it's great to have you from Oklahoma. We have the majority of our board here and most of you worked with Lori in the past. But in review, we were seeking a compensation consultant. Twenty twenty-one, we started looking and hired Lori in two thousand twenty-two based on a very high recommendation from the town of Estes Park. So this is our second time working with her and we've learned, rather than doing this once every three to five years, we do it annually. Essentially the same price, but we get the update on a more regular basis. So many of you know inflation this year was, I said nine percent, but in your report, Lori, you show it's eight point. Six, seven, or what have you, but it was an extraordinary year. And we asked Lori to help us make the decisions to retain our staff and to remain competitive, so. Without further ado, I want to thank Lori for dialing in and giving us her summary.
Awesome, well, thank you, I appreciate that, I appreciate you guys allowing me a little bit of time. On what I'm sure is a packed budget agenda this evening, so I'll try to be cautious with your time. I do have a short presentation I'm going to go through. Not terribly long, nine or ten slides, but I want to give you not only the results, but also a bit of an overview of the process. Because I think that helps to have a little bit of a context, so I'll share my screen. Make sure I can get this presentation to come up, hopefully you're seeing that PowerPoint presentation. That works, okay, awesome, thank you. So probably again, not news to anyone here, but the intent and the scope of the project, right? The intent is certainly to ensure that the library district can continue to recruit and retain the talent that you need to run the organization that you're running. And clearly, one of the key ways that you do that is ensuring that you're paying all of your employees competitively to the external market. And I think obviously that's always been important, but never more so than now, because we know that's been quite the moving target, right? Over this last twelve to eighteen months, so. Primary focus of the study was again, looking at external market data and ensuring that the pay structure that we built for the district continues to remain competitive. Obviously, it's also important that that structure be put together in a way that it allows for career progression, right? And appropriate sustainable wage growth for many of the long-term employees that you have and the ones that you obviously intend to keep long-term. Our scope in that project is to provide the recommendations, obviously it is up to the district and to this board as to what gets implemented. But our scope is to make sure that we're providing recommendations that are based on current valid market data. From a defined area that's appropriate for the district. And then to make sure that in addition to that, we include recommendations for implementation and ongoing maintenance. So just an overview of the deliverables, right? When we come into work on a project, even when it's a client that we've worked with before, we always want to sit down and review current state. What does the structure look like, how are the jobs classified, where is employee pay relative to that structure? Are there jobs that have changed in scope from the prior year or new jobs that have been added, right? Particular areas where you might be having a hard time recruiting or retaining, so we do kind of an in-depth look into current state. We look specifically at jobs that have changed or been added since our last study, again, to make sure that we have all the information that we need. To really appropriately match them to the data. When we pull data from the existing survey, which is primarily the Employers Council survey. We are pulling wages, actual wages being paid, right, to other incumbents doing similar work. Using that information, we recommend revisions or updates to the pay structure to make sure again that it's staying aligned with market. We also look to see if any of the positions within the district maybe have grown more rapidly than others. So that certain positions may need to be upgraded, right, to the next highest pay grade, which is kind of a common thing that happens. Because we know that even when the labor market is moving rapidly, not all jobs are moving at the same pace. So another reason why it's helpful to do these studies a little bit more often, because that way you don't miss certain jobs that might have been moving more quickly than others. Once that's done, we look at the financial impact analysis of implementation, we make sure that we haven't done anything that would create issues with internal pay equity. We look specifically at pay compression, right, to make sure that you're not experiencing compression between some of your longer service employees and maybe new ones that are being hired in. And then the project wraps up with a final written report. So a little bit of context, and again, I'm certain that this is not lost on everyone in the room, I won't spend too much time on it, but. Clearly, it's an important time for everyone to be doing comp studies, you know, it's been an unprecedented year from an inflation standpoint. Coming into two thousand twenty-two, we saw the Social Security Cost of Living Adjustment at five point nine percent, which felt shocking at the time, right? Highest one we'd had in forty years, and now they've announced the increase for next year and it's eight point seven percent, which. I honestly did not think that I would see in my lifetime, but right, an indication of where we're at. From an inflationary standpoint, Bureau of Labor Statistics that puts out information on the CPI. The Denver area CPI, which is the closest. Area that they have to where you are was showing an eight point one percent increase for the twelve months ending in August. I do believe there is a September number out and I don't have it in here, but I think it's similar, it might be slightly just under eight. And then the Fed has increased rates four times this year, which again feels a little unprecedented, right? Three and a half percent movement in one year, which certainly has a big. Impact on housing costs, which is a huge issue, right, for employees, particularly in an area like, like Estes Park. So I think really the point here is that the recognition that when you get into a labor market and an inflation period like this. You're really going to be kind of forced to incur higher labor costs. Regardless of whether or not you implement a new wage structure or you redesign your wage structure. Because the reality of it is turnover is very costly, particularly in positions that require a lot of training and technical skill set. So turnover has costs associated with it. And then obviously, when you hire new employees to replace any that you may lose. You're kind of going to be forced to pay market rates for new people that you hire, and that just creates more pay compression issues, so. Certainly, it's important to stay on top of it proactively, which is something I think the district has, has done a good job of. So just to be clear on the market data that we use, we do use data from Employers Council. And Employers Council segregates all of their library data and they report this out based on types of organizations. And so what we relied on is the library district data, so gathering data from library districts all over the state. But then knowing that sometimes that doesn't have, there are certain jobs that there aren't very many matches within that group from. We went a step further and we pulled what they call the All Colorado Data Line, which means for certain jobs where there might not have been very many matches or reporting among districts. We pulled those same jobs at the All Colorado line. And that just gives us, gives us the ability to make sure that we have kind of a statistically valid result, right? We don't want something that just has one or two people contributing to it. Because then any anomalies they have in their data, right, is going to come through into yours. The other thing that we do when we pull that data, even though we're using the most recent data, data that was just published this summer. We know that that data was gathered earlier this year, generally in Q one. And we're building a pay structure that's going to be implemented next year, so we know that the market has continued to move. Even since that data was collected that we're working with. So to ensure that what we're doing isn't already outdated by the time we publish it. We age the data forward, meaning we simply increase it to account for that market shift that has occurred from the time it was collected to the time that you'll be implementing. We used a pretty conservative aging number, I would say, we aged it forward by three percent. I would say across a lot of my book of business, particularly municipal sector book of business, we've been aging five percent this year. Three percent felt like a more conservative number, so that's what we used. Again, from that survey data, what we're pulling are actual wages being paid, we're not just pulling. Pay ranges and comparing yours to theirs and saying, oh, okay, it's close enough. We want to know what are people actually earning, because that's what we want to anchor our recommendations to. And we also scrub or adjust the results to make sure that we're accounting for any uniqueness that might exist. Within your positions and the way they're organized there at the district compared to others. So we spend a lot of time there, because that's really the piece that it's, it's critically important that you get right. And then obviously, our goal is to match as many of the district's positions to that external data source as we can. Which we were able to do, and it gives us a really solid foundation for the recommendations. So on the pay structure itself, we're not recommending any structural changes, meaning we're not breaking it out into a separate. Pay family or changing the widths of the ranges, what we are recommending is that the entire pay structure increase five percent. Right, that way you know that your pay ranges are continuing to keep pace with market. Your minimums, your midpoints and your maximums will remain competitive. So not a structural change, but simply an increase to the entire structure to account for market movement. In addition to that, as we spoke about earlier, there were six positions whose. Market value had increased more than all of the others and enough to warrant an upgrade to the next highest pay grade. So again, we're showing six additional positions that will move up a pay grade. And then the entire structure would shift, simply shift by five percent in addition to that. So a little bit of a graphical representation of what I'm talking about here, you know, if, if we, if we only had one slide to show, this would probably be the slide that I would show. And what we're graphing here are really three pieces of information. This blue, the blue dots and the exponential line that's created there, that's graphing the current midpoints. Of the pay ranges that the district has in place right now, so the ones that we put in place last time. Those are range midpoints and that green line is what represents that two thousand twenty-two market average. When we pulled all that information from the survey, that's where everything came through. So if you see this, this right here, the gap between your current range midpoints and the market data. This is what we're trying to close, this is what that five percent recommended pay structure increase is going to do. This red line, these are the current pay rates of your current employees, right? So they're showing that they, they track very similarly to everything else. You can see that most of them sit just below market average, but most of them are above the current midpoints of the pay ranges. Right, and these are certainly going to fluctuate, the placement of where your current employees are going to fluctuate. Based on how many years they've been there and how much experience they have. So the fact that you see some of those red dots down here and some up here, that doesn't mean that they're out of the pay range. Because again, keep in mind, this is just the midpoint that we're graphing here, so the range itself is significantly wider. But this is just shows the graphical representation of that gap between your current range midpoints and market that we're attempting to close. Right, so that's what that five percent recommendation is based on. So with that, this is really just a snapshot of what the new proposed pay structure would look like, it's very similar to what you have right now, structurally, it's identical. You can see that each of the grades have a minimum, a midpoint and a maximum, we've expressed it here, both annualized and hourly. These design statistics are simply saying that each of the pay ranges are forty percent wide. Meaning the distance from the minimum to the maximum, forty percent. And this ten percent midpoint simply means that each pay grade is ten percent higher than the one below it, so they're all consistently placed throughout the structure. The only reason I have this minimum of pay grade ten highlighted is because that's obviously a number that you would change as. Minimum wage changes, right, you want to make sure you never have a pay range that has a minimum lower than minimum wage, so it would, it certainly could shift and change over time. Which would change the width of that particular range. So the high-level impact of implementing this is really fairly simple, so. Some positions will have changed relative position on the classification listing, meaning they might be higher or lower than positions they were grouped with before. Because again, we pulled current market value for each job and ensured that each job was placed in the pay grade on the structure according to that value. So really what this means is we don't arbitrarily group jobs together and say, everyone with a supervisor title should be in this grade. Or everyone with a manager title should be in this grade, we really look at the, at the underlying market data to ensure they're being placed appropriately. And then again, we make sure that we're not creating any concerns with internal equity and that where we can. We have built progressive positions that can allow career progression. The other good news, and obviously because the district has stayed on top of this, is that there are no incumbents or current employees in your, on your pay structure right now. Whose current rates are below the minimum of the new ranges, right? So everyone would be in range, they would certainly be do pay increases, but no one is below the minimum of the new range. And then just for my final steps, obviously, it's presenting the results to you this evening. We will finalize our written report, the documents, our process, our findings and all of our recommendations. And then obviously, it's up to the district to implement the new pay structure if it's approved and they identified pay increases in two thousand twenty-three. So quite a bit of information that I went through relatively quickly, if there are questions that you have, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Lori, we did have it in advance, so we were able to take a look at it, anyone have any questions for Lori? Any comments from you, Lottie?
Lori, you got us the information well enough in advance that Cindy and I. Were able to put that holding, that fifty, was it fifty-four thousand? In our first draft of the budget, so that this draft that you're all looking at today does have that money distributed. Based on those recommendations, so the version you're looking at has assumed her feedback with one exception. As you might imagine, with salary increases, there's increases to retirement para contribution and so on, so. There's not a five percent salary increase, there's a four percent salary increase across the board. And the rest of it needed to be absorbed by the excellent benefits that we offer. So that's all, I just wanted to say, Lori, your, your timing and your ability to speak in complete paragraphs is always excellent. And I'd turn it over to the board members who may have more specific questions.
Right, anyone? Is the hour working, it seems to just be pointed at me.
Eric may know more than I do about how to make this working.
It is moving.
It's working on my side, I can see each of you as you speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, it doesn't move, you won't notice.
Oh.
We must have had me running it before, we're quite distracted, so.
Again, we thank you, Lori, for the excellent work, it is very helpful and we'll look forward to continuing our association with you.
Awesome, thank you so much, I appreciate it, have a good evening and have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Okay. We'll move ahead then, next is the, I would mention, we somehow left the public hearing for the family insurance off?
A good question, John.
So I'm gonna put it back on.
We double-checked with the state, it is the, the hearings for the staff. So the staff has had, yeah, it was confusing language, we have, we have multiple staff present and they can affirm. But thank you for checking, yeah.
All right, great, so. The agenda hopefully as printed is complete then, and we will move to the public hearing for the two thousand twenty-three proposed budget and turn it over to our president, David Penwell.
All right, thank you, John, I will be using a script that we need to go through to make this official and I don't mess it up. So as Treasurer of the Library's Governing Board, I'm calling to order the public hearing for the Estes Valley Public Library District, two thousand twenty-three proposed budget. Library Board and Trustees will approve the two thousand twenty-three final budget on Monday, December twelfth at six thirty P M. The public is invited to provide comment during this budget hearing, the board as a whole body will take comments into consideration as we deliberate on the budget. Any person or group wishing to speak is requested to sign, will sign in indicating their interest and just addressing the board. The time for comments will be limited to three minutes. Please note the board will listen but may not comment on them and no action will be taken during the time period. However, the full board may give direction to the staff following the budget hearing. The proposed budget has been announced in both newspapers and posted on the library website. The revised numbers are the total general fund revenue is two million five hundred eighty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-five. Total general fund expenditures are two million five hundred forty-four thousand nine hundred thirty. These expenditures are divided into two categories, services and support. Services include circulation, youth, adult and technical expenses. And the services expenditures total one million five hundred eighty-five thousand nine fifty-three. Support includes administration, building and capital expenses. Support expenditures total nine hundred fifty-eight thousand nine seventy-eight. Total capital fund available. Currently is two, two hundred thirty-six thousand one twelve. Total capital fund expenditures in the budget, which is new this year, is a hundred fifty thousand. That's great, that's our first time doing that budget. So all right, those are the, the numbers, I will turn to Claudine to provide the budget highlights.
Thank you very much, David, I, I want to give credit to Cindy who's put together the budget highlights. Which you have seen, it is even and it's in the, the public packet. It is an update from draft number one, which you received in October. I'm going to try not to read off of this, but I will make the major updates. We did, of course, submit our budget on time, there was a slightly revised version which was presented to the board and uploaded on the website. So all three versions are available for inspection. And the updates are the most important part that I love is at the top is there are no major. Changes from the original draft, that's not usual for us, we usually have incremental changes. And as I mentioned when Lori was on the screen, the most important part was the fifty-four thousand that we held. To show in our expenditures next year as probable increases. For CPI have been distributed from the admin line to all the various departmental lines. That is the biggest difference and for, I guess, purposes of posterity, this is the first year we're having a separate capital budget. And it's something we're probably going to do in perpetuity. So other than that, let me look through the notes. The only other major difference I'm seeing is through the year, we always ask our vendors, whether it's insurance or jobbers of any kind. What their projected increase, if any, would be. And not surprisingly, our insurance costs are notable increase. That is the world, I'm sure your home insurance is also increasing, it is at the library, some are more modest than others. But property insurance is up, I don't know what that is, ten percent. We talked about the wages. Health benefits are estimated and they still are estimated from the town, as a reminder, we piggyback on the town of Estes Parks benefits. One of my favorite things to say every year, because I see many library districts who don't have that and have to negotiate their benefits packages annually. So we're very grateful to the town, even though this year we're estimated at a ten percent increase. Oh, there's an, that's great, Cindy, please.
I actually did update it to actual.
Great.
In this version, it didn't change much.
Okay.
Yeah, they kept the employees at five percent and ours was just right about ten percent, it was very close.
Thank you very much. And it looks like things still unknown, and that does happen this time of year. You all may recall, we use an insurance broker, and so the broker is brokering our liability property flood. And we've only got an estimate in at this time, so we'll have those locked in, we hope. Before the December twelfth date, if not, we'll do our best guess, which is a ten percent estimate. And I'm not sure, John, if there's, from the report, there may be some questions from the board members, but. Perhaps the largest statement to make about next year is, but I can't remember the exact number, but the percentage of staff we lost during COVID. From moving on from the great resignation was. On par with the rest of the Estes Valley, it was not unique, but I believe it was forty percent. So what we're looking for two thousand twenty-three to accomplish, as you look at the projects from the director's point of view is. We're doing a lot of stabilization, we're doing a lot of training. We're hiring the architect or the interior designer to help us rethink the space, we're doing the roof, those are the big things. The rest are projects that are stabilizing our services. We've had three makerspace librarians right this year, where we have two vacancies. So next year for us, though you will still see a lot of productivity, is, it's called the year of consolidation, is what we're calling it internally. We're just consolid, so I want to give Brad credit, Brad Majetti, who used a, the mushroom analogy, which is mushrooms grow by first putting out. Their feelers underground and then they strengthen by connecting from those feelers, so this year we're just consolidating. John, I'm happy to answer any questions.
You're leaving this.
Oh, thanks, sorry, David.
Well, thank you, Claudine, the next order is, is there any public comment?
Yeah.
I'm Keith Baranzen, I'm talented on this in two thousand and five. I'd like to start with the architect, that can do that with the so. The library spent no more than ten thousand dollars for a space planner. Who recommend. Moving the chairs and so on here and there, and that would be fifty thousand dollars for an architect. Tell you where to put the chairs. It seems sort of silly. I've never heard of an architect really. I've never heard of an architect really being used unless there was physical remodeling. I haven't heard of any real physical remodeling. You're not talking about tearing down walls or building new walls or anything like that. Do you wanna say something, Dave?
Uh, no, I'm just waiting for you to go ahead and finish your comments.
Okay. Yeah, fifty thousand for an architect. There's only ten thousand back in two thousand seven. Not really architectural, but just remodeling. I mean, it's not remodeling. I haven't heard any mention of remodeling. It's just uh, interior decorating, moving chairs and tables and so on. Yeah, it's hard to believe that you would need fifty thousand for that. I heard another funny number last time was. Uh, a handyman for eighty to a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. That's more than anybody in the library staff is paying. You know, all you have to do is advertise that. You're being ripped off if somebody tries to get that for a handyman. Now, books, digital books, uh, almost fifty-seven thousand for digital books. Gee, only thirty-two thousand for real books. Fifty-seven thousand for digital, thirty-two for real. Most people still read physical books. And ebooks make no sense at all for libraries since they cost you more than physical books. How many people read them? You have a fund balance of over three and a half million dollars. If you spent one percent of that on physical books in addition to the thirty-two thousand, you could more than double your spending on physical books. So I've got plenty of money to buy them. Another problem with the physical book collection. Is that you tend to sell a book after just a year. So you buy plenty of books, but then you probably can't leave. The result is that the stack don't match. It's pretty sparse and pretty old. I think circulation in the stacks is practically nothing. And that does not prove that people don't want physical books, which just means you don't have much to check out. You have to have a little faith that people would like to read if it actually gave them something to read. Instead of saying, oh, they don't check out much. I'll go ahead, Dave.
Okay, if you're finished, so again, we we won't be making comments during this time right now. As we move on, the the board will be allowed to make comments if they wish.
Oh, you know, I thought, do I still have a few seconds? I thought of something else. Uh, a five percent pay increase next year. I don't think that will close the gap between your wages and the market. Because the market is going to go up too. You know, the price is rising. Uh, eight or nine percent, I think the market will go up at least five percent. So I think the gap between the market will remain. Market goes up five percent, you go up five percent, you'll still have a gap. Alright, I'm done.
Okay, Keith, well, thank you. Okay, uh, time for trustees' comments discussion uh, on the budget now. Uh, John, I I don't know if we need to make any comments now regarding things like the architect or anything like that. There are more plans than just moving chairs, I guess is.
Yeah, um. The library, excuse me, the library needs to rethink the use of uh, quite a bit of the space. We've had on the consideration redoing the staff room and uh. Areas for some time now and haven't done it. Uh, we've continued to put it off to. Kind of save money and and uh, you know, deal with things as is. There is the real possibility of movement smalls and re- redefining some of the areas. Uh, based on the community needs assessment and that'll be part of the strategic work. That the board plans to do this coming, early this coming year. And so if from that needs assessment, the feedback we've gotten from the broader community. Um, there's a possibility. And the idea of whether it's an architect or a space consultant. Claudine's looking into just who would be best to meet the needs based on the new strategies that we have for the building.
I think it's a good point to bring out that needs assessment, John. Uh, a lot of our future thinking will be based on the results of that. And we'll have more more of those results come up soon here. So uh, some some things in the budget are, if they're place worries. That probably will get used, but it's not like it's managed or we're gonna spend that much money necessarily. Unless the needs assessment and other factors dictate that.
I guess the other thing I would comment on from previous reports from Kathleen. On our book supply and and ebooks versus physical books. Uh, we've had no complaints that I've heard of as far as anyone obtaining the materials that they want either way. Uh, if they want something and we don't have them on our stacks physically. They're obtained through the interlibrary loan program and we use that, uh, I think wisely. Uh, I think our ebook checkout rate is much higher than the physical book. Uh, check that right now.
We'll have to check the stats, but I'd be happy to report back next next meeting.
Yeah.
Um, Kathleen does a pretty expert job, uh, and I'm. I'm sorry that I didn't bring forward some of the comments we've received the last few months. Um, those, you know, those qualitative measures that say. The collection is excellent. Um, we get a lot of verbal comments about the quality of the collection. Um, I think I wish we had a larger library, uh, and I'd be delighted to have a bigger collection here for the community. We we actually have one, I think I have to look at the the data, L R S dot org. Has um, information on per capita expenditures for material. You know, I think that might be of interest. We can also. So Joe, if you remind me, we'll do a little looking through L R S. Uh. In this month's report, I think we put in that the increase of both physical and digital. Circulation materials from last year is about thirteen and a half percent for both. But Keith raises an excellent point, which is the digital material costs not double, sometimes three to four times as much. Um, so one of the funding issues I know for a fact is we pay a whole lot more for digital than we do. And um, I think the the average patron, if we ask them, and we certainly can, is it's the ease. It's um, it's not the cost for them. It's there. It's the convenience. But I think um, some very uh, fair points were raised and happy to look at some of the data and report back.
That's good. And we'll have our collections report in April again.
Every year.
Anyone else have any comments?
Pete or Ann, if you have any comments?
I don't, I don't, I don't know if it is. I don't. Thank you though.
No, me either.
Thank you, guys.
The other thing I guess I would mention, a reminder that we're now. Have uh, available the physical checkouts from Eagle Rock and uh, schools. So that really adds also to the total. Um, volume, if you will, of books available to our patrons. Okay.
Anyone else? Want to comment at this point, so? Okay, well, I've not heard a lot of more directions other than maybe the the statistics that we're just asked for for next meeting. I didn't miss anything else, do I?
I I guess I I would uh, express my concern that we are going only with the four percent instead of the five percent. I know that the finance committee and Claudine have discussed and uh, with staff. Uh, that direction uh, because of anticipated revenues.
Right.
Um, I would remind the board again that we have a very sizable, uh, long-term reserve. And at some point, I hope that whether this board or a future board. Would consider starting to use some of that and not just sit on it uh, forever. And I think staff's uh, the place to invest in that. My opinion.
Minor comment on that. We we have discussed it in finance, but uh, most of that is operations that is implemented by Claudine, so. While we're discussing, it's it's really an end to that. Bruisol, so.
So it's you and me fighting, John.
Not, it's not a fight. It's just a recommendation that we do have funds and at some point, I think. Although I I think many would like to. Keep that in reserve for tragic time. Um. It's starting to get a bit excessive, I think, for uh, consideration of of our public. Um, and and what we do with those funds.
Um, might I say this year, twenty twenty-three of consolidation, which is just the term you're gonna hear me say again and again. Or as the staff calls it, the year of the mushroom as a as a short, as a shorthand. Um, is the year in which we really wanna start looking at, are we going to be tapping to the reserve and if so, for what reason? If this facility, per the town's advice to us, has a ten-year life. What what is the best use of those uh, reserved dollars? So I'm open, as you are, as the board is, but just know. I'm waiting until we've done the work next year before we consider dipping in.
Fair enough. And I think in the new strategic work is important in that regard as well.
Thank you, John.
I don't disagree.
Okay, unless there's uh, any other comments to be made, um. I will say that we are adjourned from this public meeting on the budget.
Thank you very much, David. And everyone. Uh, we will move then to uh, strategic discussions and reports. I have just a few things for as far as government affairs. Uh, there's been some question about the process uh, for uh, officers and committees for next year. Our process is that uh, we will have a vote at our January board meeting as far as new officers. Lynn and I have discussed. I have talked with uh, a few of the people and. We have a list of potential officers. And uh, that will be presented at that time and everyone has agreed. Uh, that they were willing to fulfill those those positions. Uh, at that time then, uh, Lynn, uh, or the new president, excuse me. Uh, will uh, appoint the committees. That's the role of the president. And any special task force. And we've been talking about uh, at least one uh, special task force on facilities. That will be working with Claudine and other staff members. For next year. So that's that process. Um, I am currently uh, participating, as is Annie. On a parking revenue task force with the town. Um, I have sent out an email to a number of my contacts to try to get some feedback. Uh, I'm interested in the board and staff uh, feedback as well. Our next meeting looks like it's probably gonna be around the December seventh. So if you have any feedback, what this is, uh, the town has experienced over the last two years. Uh, just a little less than five hundred thousand dollars in excess revenue from the parking metering. Which wasn't supposed to earn any money at all, so. So um, if we're, those of us on the committee are supposed to present our top three. Uh, kind of uses, potential uses for those funds. Uh, right now, it is limited. Uh, potentially to parking and congestion related issues in the town. Is that what you understand?
Yeah, there's a special ordinance that we could, I can find and just read. Do you want, do you have it?
No, that's.
Yeah, and it's just about manage, you know, the, we would use the excess funds for management, administration. Uh, new, so.
New equipment.
New equipment, maybe in parking, you know, if you've thought of maybe little mini parking garages or more paid parking. So just, but it has to be really focused on just uh, parking, not not like new benches or flowers or. You know, uh, things like that, so. And if if you're interested, I could send everyone the the special ordinance that describes. The parameters of the.
Although they did bring up the potential of changing that to an enterprise fund.
Right, but.
And use it for a broader.
Right, but it becomes pretty problematic to do that, so.
So.
It'd be helpful. We didn't do that yet.
I guess one of the things I'm thinking of suggesting is, how about more time? Especially in our lot here, uh, for patrons, uh. Instead of thirty, sixty minutes, maybe extending it to ninety or something, uh, or saving a few extra. Library spaces and not get quite so much excess revenue.
You're gonna see in the C N A that that comment about parking.
Oh, yeah.
Was very much a reoccurring thing.
Yeah.
And in fact, one of the focus groups, they had a hard time moving them off that topic. So.
Yeah. So that that's gonna be one. I wanna know the staff's kind of position. Claudine and I are gonna talk at some point.
So do you want me to send you the parameters or?
If you could send it to me, I'll send it out. It'd be great. Thanks very much.
I'll do that. When I get home.
Okay, so anyway, if you have any thoughts on that, just feel free to send me a note on it. Um, and maybe buy our study session on December first. Um, the other thing is, and I don't think anyone's gonna bring this up, but I will. Uh, we had a meeting, uh, Claudine and I, Sarah and Annie, uh, this last week. And uh, we have agreed that since understanding right now is. We're going to be well underspent on our expenditure budget and have a surplus again that we will. Uh, have you already sent it, request?
Yes, Sarah, and we've already received the checks.
Okay, so we're, we we requested and received the reimbursement for Sarah's. Um, salary and benefits. Um, Cindy and Claudine are gonna work to identify. The programs and items that were dedicated. Donations or grants through the Friends and Foundation that we actually spent. But not go to the the total three hundred thousand number. There's no reason for us, in other words, to bring in excess funds from the Friends and Foundation. Just to put them in our reserves. And so they can, they will earmark. The remainder as funds to come to the library at that point in time when we require them.
Right, in our reserve, that makes more money.
Yes, there is. So unless there's objection, that's the direction I've given. Okay? No objection? Alright. That's uh, all I have, I think, unless anyone has any questions for me or Lynn. None? Okay, we'll move along. Uh, okay, and Lynn have an update on the. Community needs assessment.
Aaron presented us a draft report, us being the C N A committee. Um. And actually, I think this afternoon, we got the final report, which I haven't had a chance to get. Um, he will be at the December study session to present the findings from the C N A. Um, you know, I I think it's gonna be very interesting. There were almost six hundred survey responses and. Kay and Eric, correct me when I misspeak here. Um, there were twenty-three participants in focus groups. We also have five Spanish language phone interviews. Um, and and I think Eric and Kay will agree, there is a ton of data to sort through, but. Um. You know, Aaron will be presenting his findings and I don't wanna steal his thunder, but. You know, overall, people were very positive about the library, about the staff, about the programs, about the collection. Um, we'll hear some areas of focus that. Things that we can look at to better meet what the community is looking for. One, as Kay said, parking was. Everywhere in in the the comments and kind of crowds and crowds of parking. Um, which we have limited control over, but it's there. Um, there were some issues surrounding communications. Um, people don't always know what it is we're doing. Um. And there were some concerns about the website. And how can we make it more useful, user user friendly? Um, and we heard some things about programming and scheduling.
Yep.
And I I think those are the main areas that we'll hear from Aaron in in much more detail. But I think it's gonna give us a lot of good information as we enter a strategic planning process and it. I believe will feed to, you know, both some program ideas. And some fiscal space ideas that presumably then roll into, you know, some needs. And an R F P process as we look at, what do we need as an architect? Does it? You know, designer.
Thank you.
What did I miss?
I think that's the highlights.
Yeah.
To go into it much more is this study session, so.
It's been a fascinating process, and I think we've got great stuff.
Good, okay, any questions for them? Anyone? Either hand, just raise your hand or unmute if you have anything, anytime, okay, great. Okay, we'll move on to the finance committee. Anything additional from the finance committee uh on our status, current status?
I don't remember anything. The monthly report was as as expected, though. Only I kept him in case.
We can't either.
Yeah.
So I.
We had a nice visit.
That's always nice, and you signed off on all the expenditures, I'm curious. Um did I misspeak with regard to the anticipated uh over. Underspendings?
Uh no, I am tracking it as close as I can. Um and yeah.
Anyone have any questions for finance committee? It's your chance. Dee, are you trying?
Yeah, uh I just had, uh being out of touch lately, I I'm a little bit un- unaware of, where are we on the uh accounting support? We were getting with Cindy, or is that person started? Are they, how many hours a week they working, that kind of thing?
Pete, do I have good news? Uh we ha- we hired Janet and Totsy and Totsy, how does she say her?
And Tozi.
And Tozi, um she's been here for, she was hired in April, oh my gosh. It's been that long, hired in April.
I withdraw my question, that just makes me look stupid.
I love it. She's doing beautifully. I know that uh segregation of duties has gone well. You just let me brag about my staff beat, it's okay. Uh and again, credit to Janet, we posted for a twenty-four hour accounting assistant book. Uh and what we got is someone who we snuckered into doing facilities work as well. So it's gone well, Pete, thank you for the chance to brag.
And I can brag on her too. While Claudine was gone, uh I came in a few times those weeks and signed. For checks and expenditures and so forth, and she was right on top of things, we're saying, so. I think you did a really good job on that hire.
So we have resolved the very real issue um that Pete brings up, so segregation of duties and um someone checking the books up.
Yay.
Yes, our auditor should be very happy.
I'm really hoping, um yeah, I I.
Okay, okay, we'll move on to the library director's report, Claudine.
Thank you, uh if you, if you, well, yeah, I will move swiftly perhaps through the administrative report. Um and then move on to the quarter three report uh. Spend my time there. So the only difference uh from the usual admin report, folks, is this is we. About a year ago, Joe might remember the actual date, uh it could be three years ago under COVID. But I, uh but we asked to put some curves around how we report to the board. We were reporting a lot of information often, and so we've kind of segregated things out. So the monthly admin report is where the administrative staff shares what we think is relevant for governance level. But I do invite the um supervisors for each team, if they have something they wanna brag about or let you know about that they think is relevant. This is where that information goes, okay? So you might have seen new reports, and I'm just giving you the reason as to why. You'll see something a little outside of the norm. Um I wanna thank um Cindy, who let me attach my name to her family summary. Um on this document, it's uh S.
Good evening, second floor of the library will be closing in fifteen minutes at seven forty-five. The library will be closing in thirty minutes.
Uh this is a full summary in preparation for the decision you're going to make uh during action items, but all the detail is here. Cindy, thank you for being so in touch with the Special District Association and the um color of finance officers for for that material. Um the rest, I think, is self-explanatory, except where I snuck in under the director's report. A request for a potential additional task force, so I'll talk about that in just a moment. Um but there's some really great bragable points about the program team. Um and some progress on uh projects on your technical services. And of course, uh Annie's present uh bullet points from the Friends and Foundation. Are there any questions I can answer on that, on that report?
I'd just like to compliment the efforts, uh I think primarily from Joanna with regard to staff development. And uh interesting things you've been doing and I guess very positive feedback from. The responses, the you had diagram, so that's great. I'm I'm glad to see that. That's important stuff.
Well, uh I I think Joe, and I really wanna give Matt McNulty. Here, years ago, it was his idea that we put together a staff professional development committee, and the results have been really positive. I saw you smiling, there's a child on screen. Okay, uh so um John and I think Lynn, I hope you'll uh indulge my slipping in that point. Under the director's report about uh potential strategic planning. Um task force we're going to do internally with the staff. I really do need two board members to join us. I'm not asking for volunteers right now, but I wanted to plant the seed. Uh Joanna and I have been working with the Colorado State Library, which offers free consulting service on on that process. Uh the first thing they say we have to do is a community needs assessment check. And uh so they think they'd like to begin with us as early as January. By working backwards in order to have the material we need for the budget uh in October, so. I will be looking for um at someone who, because here's what I can't do and here's what the state library can't do. Is the the excellent wordsmithing. If we have somebody who uh on the board, who loves. Making excellent action terms, right, the final product work. The what the state library does is facilitate the process. We would need to hire someone, which we could do, to put the spit and polish on it, so I'm looking for a spit polisher, just letting you know. Okay, um if it's not on the board, we should look at our volunteers also. Happy to do that, great idea. Um again, we should have all the material and the content. We will have the pro- they will facilitate us through the process. It's the it's the wordsmither that we are looking for.
So is this an addition to the entire board working on the new strategic plan?
So the way, yes, the answer to that is yes, John. Um the way the state library explained it to me is. Uh representative from the Friends and Foundation, two representatives, key staff members, and then two board members, right? That group will be the task force working with the board occasionally, asking questions of the staff, using the CNA. So whereas the whole board will be involved, the two, the the task force will be the ones most involved. Uh so that's my sales pitch from uh this, talking to the state library, and um I really like the idea of going more broadly. Okay, uh that's the administrative report and um. Next on the agenda is the third quarter report. Um as a reminder, we have some keystones. Those keystones are to actually increase library use. Uh to improve the library's services and to continue investing in our library workplace. So this is the shortest version we've given you. It is still nine pages. It's a lot of white space. Um but um I'm gonna go down to some deliverables. Um we, we this year, as a reminder, we've had a three-year strategic plan. Uh during COVID, we did two operational years, just operational work plans in a row. So this was just a bridge to get us to our next strategic planning process, which is the beginning of next year. Um the measures that we used, most of them are quantitative, some of them are qualitative. Uh they are not, as I think the staff would be the first to tell you. Expert measures of the library's health and performance, right? We can look at the library research service data that I gave to you a month or two ago for that. This was as the staff was turning over, as things were being rebuilt, what are things we could hang our head on? So um I think really the main highlights are the program team has been doing really excellent work. In providing voluminous programs um to the public. What we're seeing is very small numbers of people are coming to those programs relative to the past. But are they're they're hitting targets, right? So that's what I really wanna focus on with the program team is, there's a lot of experimentation. Um and I think they're doing a terrific job. We're uh that team is going to be looking at, why are we getting smaller numbers of attendees? Um so that research is be is going to occur in early next year. Um in terms, so that's of course, that's goals one, two, and three. Right, that's a all programming team takes on the first three goals. Uh the, is it the third as well? Yeah, first three. The fourth would be delivering materials on a personalized basis. That's where some of the data is on. We created targets for the checkout of materials, both physical and digital. And how are we doing in our progress to make sure our staff is trained to. Uh help our patrons at their point of need, that's in progress. Um and then goal five is all of the internal work. And um I did chide uh Joanna for the length of her report. But um I think it is very informative. And again, much of these are measures that occur by the end of twenty twenty-two or that occur at the end of twenty twenty-three. So it is a a legitimate progress report, this this is our progress, not necessarily our uh the results. Um I'm not sure if there's anything else to point out that you haven't already seen. I believe that's it, John, and I'd be happy to answer uh any questions.
Good, thank you. So comments, questions? Board members?
I have a comment. Um I'm always amazed where the library comes up. I was up, I was on a trail. Ran into Bo, our service dog.
Oh.
Who um works with her, I think, early.
Uh early childhood.
Yeah, and I think she said they were up to three-year-olds who cannot read. But they get a book and they turn pages and they gibber, and then when they're done, they say treat. And they get excited and Bo gets excited because they get to give Bo a treat, but. It just was so much fun listening to her talk about bringing in her dog. And and trying to set some um kind of routines or patterns. For little kids who don't even read. I just loved it.
Thanks, Kay. I I, so my daughter's twenty-one, and I still have a photo of her reading. Just Star was the dog.
Okay.
Fifteen years ago, wait, eighteen years ago, and uh. They are so proud of their non-reading, reading to that dog, and it is a behavioral. It is a shameless behavioral service we give that encourages the kids to, so thanks for that.
I just, but. You're about the library.
Thank you, Bo.
The place.
Um I've I've had it on the trail a few times, running in the people. Whether they're wo- local residents or visitors, either one. Anyone else? Comments on the report? Around the idols here? I would comment that I was amazed at. Some of the levels that we have, they've accomplished, the staff has accomplished on some of the programs and so forth. You say they aren't getting as many people as before, but they're exceeding.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of the goals that we set for this timeframe because of COVID and other things going on, perhaps, but still. Some pretty, pretty nice numbers and everything I keep reading in the newspaper and and getting emails on and so forth from the library. Uh a lot of programming, so they're they're doing a real effort, and you as their supervisor.
Um Eric, thank you for the work you're doing, and thank you for putting up with me as your supervisor. Your pseudo-supervisor.
Okay. Well, but.
Claudine, I did see that there were some things that we don't have numbers on.
Oh.
Are they be like?
Yeah.
One, a early literacy.
Oh, yeah.
We don't know how many families we're mailing books to. Are those just things that we're working on getting the right, the ability to track or?
Um that is actually poorly written, and that's on me. That's not, even Melanie reports and does that. We now have Kelly, you might have met at the front desk. Who's specializing in that work. What that I should have written is, we don't mail books. This quarter through the United for Literacy, that is what I, by saying there's no report. What I need to say is there's no action on that at this time.
For this quarter.
Okay, for this quarter.
Because that's just.
The United for Literacy is just before kindergarten. It's designed to deliver those books, um so it's uh.
It's first six months.
It is a hundred books, twenty-four weeks.
Yeah.
Um twenty-five weeks, right, uh of four books a week, so they get a hundred books in their house. And are reading those books just before their first day of kindergarten, so. That's what I should have said. We have not had any changes to the Dolly Parton program. Um that number has remained eighty-nine families, or eighty-nine kids. But um you know, you age out and you age in, and so because of that, it's been very stable, so. Uh I really did emphasize brevity, and maybe um I shouldn't have teased you. Instead, I should have allowed people to give them a bit more, but.
Great, thank you.
It's it is going, um but the United for Literacy doesn't go uh in the fall.
Got it.
Thank you for asking. Anything I can answer the others as well. Or I should be.
Yeah, I hope everyone does read that report. It's important for us to have that respected, okay?
Thank you, John.
All right, sounds like that's all that we have there. So we have the Friends and Foundation report. Annie, do you wanna give that?
Yeah, um let's see, uh we had on September thirtieth, we had our uh. Twenty twenty-two annual membership meeting, and that was a great night. We had fifty-two people show up. And um it was a different format. We uh, everyone sort of presented books that they'd. Uh read, so we got a list, everyone got a list of books, and it was great. And uh we have two new board members, uh Carol Whiteneck and Johnny Wolf, and their orientation will take place on November thirtieth.
In this room, right?
In this.
You're gonna do that in this room, Claudine?
I don't know the location, John, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're sorry. And uh the military section at Perfinger is on sale in November, and it's two dollars for hardcover and a dollar for paperback. And uh the cooking are switched to winter hours, which is ten to four uh every day of the week. And we will be open Friday after Thanksgiving, but we're not having a Black Friday sale.
You're not increasing your prices on that? Any questions for Friends and Foundation? Comments, okay? I was at that uh annual meeting, and I thought it was an excellent meeting. I liked the format.
It was fun.
I enjoyed it too.
The fe- feedback on what people are reading and so forth.
It was a little less formal and somehow more energetic, uh people rising up to share what they love. Um I wanted to let you know, it looking at the calendar, it's in the handiest room.
Oh, okay.
That's what it's scheduled.
Fine. Okay, all right. No other comments or questions for Annie or Sarah? Sarah, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh no, thanks for Annie for doing a great job.
I was just checking to see if you were really still. Okay, we will move on to our action items then. Uh and our first one is uh from the Government Affairs Committee. And it is resolution with thanks to Cindy and Claudine for the preparation. Um that's a resolution declaring the Estes Valley Public Library District's decision to decline participation in the Colorado Paid Family. And Medical Leave Insurance Program and to facilitate premium collection and remittance for employees that elect to participate in the program. Whereas individuals may opt into the family program via a certain section of statute. Uh even if the district opts out. And whereas uh similar section of that statute provides that a local government employer. May decline participation in the program upon a majority vote of its governing body. And whereas it is the desire of the Estes Valley Public Library District's governing board. To decline participation in the family program, but to facilitate premium collection and remittance for employees. They elect to participate in the program on their.
Excuse my interruptions. The second floor of the library is now closed.
The library will close in fifteen minutes. Please check out any items that you wish to borrow prior to eight o'clock.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Estes Valley Public Library District. Hereby declines participation in the Colorado Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program. But elects to facilitate premium collection and remittance for employees they elect to participate in the program. Adopted this twenty-first day of November, two thousand twenty-two. Can I have a motion to approve?
Some of.
Lynn moves to approve in a second. Pete?
Second.
Thank you. I saw him reaching for it. Yeah, done. Yeah. Uh, any uh, further discussion? We have an excellent report from Cindy and Claudine. And the administrative report on this, we've discussed it in the past. But if anyone has any comments or questions. You have an update for us as far as uh, you have some employees deciding to opt in?
We do.
So, that's always their option. I guess that they have that every year. They can re-chose, stop then or not?
Um, I'm gonna let Cindy answer that if I may. Family's not my strong suit. But I do know that when we were discussing whether to resolve for the district to continue to do the, essentially the backup of the House paperwork, this is, it renews in eight years. So this is, as far as I see it, an eight-year commitment by the library district. To offer this. That was Cindy's influence.
Yes.
Um, but how the staff opts in and out, I don't know. I'm not sure it's relevant. Um, but it is available to them, yes.
Yeah, it's always available, I guess.
It's not part of open enrollment. They can enroll in.
But they're basically the ones paying into it.
Right.
If they opt in.
Yes, they're half the premium.
And the reason for us not opting in, uh, or declining it is we feel like we have other program benefits. That surpass this, essentially.
Yes, and the survey that we did with the staff, who uh, over sixty percent of the staff responded. And of those responses, over sixty percent said they are not interested. Mostly based on the other programs that we have available. So, um, we're not forcing them into the program.
Right. Because if we opted in, they'd have to. They wouldn't have a choice. Pete, did you have any comment on this? No, okay. Anyone else? Alright, if there isn't, I'll ask the Anne and Pete to unmute and ask for a uh, vote. Voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution as stated, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much for the effort and work on that. Uh, the next item we have is the library closures for two thousand twenty-three. There are nine dates. Included, we're no longer closing on President's Day, which we used to do for years.
Um, it's a floating holiday now.
Yes. Uh, for people could choose.
Yep.
Uh, their birthday or whatever's important. Um, okay, and so uh, if there's no questions. I'll put forward a motion to approve these closure dates as in our packet. Is there a second?
Also good job.
Thank you, David. Uh, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor? Again, please unmute. Uh, voice vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passed unanimously.
Thank you.
I didn't hear any abstentions. Okay. Um, and now we have a policy set. Pete, I think this is your, you're an Anne.
Right, um, okay, so uh, you know, with our systematic review of the policies, um, this, the group policy sets up this month. And uh, I, I guess I make a motion to uh, approve it first, then I'll discuss. Okay, so I'd like to move that. Um, the policy set uh, is approved by the board as presented from the staff. And reviewed by the policy committee.
I thank you. There's four policies included here. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And seconded. She beat you. Okay, go ahead, Pete.
Well, I was just gonna say, um, yeah, as it says on the agenda, uh, three of these policies were existing policies. And one is a new in the photography and video recording. And the staff, uh, you know. There were, there really wasn't any content changes except in the new one. Uh, the first three, it was really wordsmithing, organizing, maybe formatting a little bit, but you know, the staff looks at these. Uh, you know, Claudine and Cindy and Joanna and, and all the supervisors, et cetera, look at these uh. You know, looking at the uh, mission and objectives and values, just making sure everything is aligned, but there was no content change. And then. Um, we uh, Anne and I met with Claudine on the fifteenth of November. And we helped her wordsmith it and organize it a little bit. So really wasn't a lot of work. There was such a good job done by the staff. Um, we didn't have to do a lot. Uh, again, it was mainly kind of reorganizing and formatting and stuff like that. So. Um, you know, I think they also take, obviously they take into consideration of the photography and video recording. Well, a couple of the others too, the First Amendment issues that the library has to um. Deal with as well as balancing that with the rules that they've set up for patron use. So. Um, I, I think they did a great job and um, have uh, I like the end result.
Thank you. Okay, questions?
I do have a question about the Makerspace policy. Um, there are. Two versions in the board chair. And one of them has, there's a phrase under basics that talks about. You being allowed to use Makerspace doesn't constitute endorsement of what you do with it.
Right.
In one of the versions that is crossed out and one of the versions that is.
In the fun, so uh, let me. I, I meant to answer that and then talk about the actual sentence. So the board gets to see the track changed. All the comments from staff and board members, you get to see the messy version. The clean version is what we show the public. The clean version's on the website and the clean version is in the board packet. So that sentence was removed. Lynn has extraneous as unnecessary.
There were just two versions in the board.
Okay.
And one had it out and one had it in.
I bet if there's a, if there's, you're saying there's a second clean version is what I would say. If there's another, so there should be a messy version?
I didn't see a second one. Granted mine.
Uh, the, but the messy version with all the track changes, Lynn, had that in there. It was in the policy that exists today. And the policy committee, the board policy committee recommended.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for asking. And uh, but it's just a process point as to how we do it and it can be confusing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions? Well, let's take them one at a time. The Makerspace policy. Anyone have any questions or comments about? The different changes in the final voting? I, I too, like Pete, I thought uh, the work that was done helps clarify, make it simpler. To kind of understand everything. Okay, none? We'll move to the meeting room, uh, room policy then.
And I, I will just credit that the uh, the program staff is the one who, the team who edited the Makerspace policy, because they were doing that. Um, Pete is right that it's the supervisors that go through it, but the program team doesn't have a supervisor, not really. So they're the ones who edited that and I think they, they did a great job.
Right, okay. Meeting rooms? Anything? Any not specific comments there? Questions? Giving you opportunity, but I don't want for long things.
Um, I would like to add, John, if I may, that there's a whole new paragraph at the top. And Pete did reference it and Pete and Anne did support it. But you'll see a lot of emphasis on the First Amendment now in our policies. These used to be seen, uh, assumed in most library policies. But now they're being pulled, I, I'd like to pull them out. To, so that if a new patron has a question as to why we're doing, what we're doing. I really want it to be the first thing that they sees. That's the rule of the libraries. We really are First Amendment. Uh, advocates and protectors. And sometimes that, that makes for sticky and uncomfortable uh, operational moments. So even in our meeting rooms, it's a reminder, anyone can meet here and they can talk about whatever they want. We only control the time.
And, and that they're not disruptive to other.
Yes, there are time, place, and manner.
I like that.
But never the content. And I think it's just those kinds of things we're beginning to pull out, folks consider.
It's about balancing the rules with First Amendment. Are your rules of the library? For the good of patrons, yeah.
And a very important thing that's been brought out is that we are a limited public.
We're a limited public forum.
Or not uh, totally open.
Not a traditional public forum. Good job, John. Yeah, the sidewalks are traditional or you think of people on their soapboxes. Right, but we're limited. We have the right to control certain aspects and so we do.
Right. Yes, well stated. Okay, uh, next is program and partner policy. Any questions or thoughts? By, with her?
Program team again, um, making sure and you'll see more emphasis on, um, it is also a place for people to express themselves. Um, the library does reserve the right. This is something I will point out. We haven't charged for a program in a long time. That third reason that, that the only time um. Fee-based programs are allowed is when I allow it. Um, it just allows for a. Uh, an out if there's some extraordinary opportunity, but just a reminder, we don't charge for programs at the public library. And uh, there's some public libraries that do. Um, but by and large, the majority do not. So I always wanna bring that forward to the full board so that you realize you do have a choice. It is my recommendation, we don't charge.
And so. Everybody that comes in from outside, some of them are paid.
Right.
But most are volunteers also. Um, Daryl the young would be one that does the music. He comes in and does a program. There's no charges and he's not paid and, and so forth.
The one book, one value program when the author comes, I assure you, he is paid.
Paid. So, but we don't charge.
We're not charging the attendees.
It's part of our budget.
Okay, thanks, John.
Yep. And then the last one is a new one. So hopefully you read through that detail, the photography and video recording policy. And of course, that's come up because of some of the things that have happened throughout Colorado as well as the nation. Uh, and people walking in, wanting to videotape everybody and everything. And ask questions and so forth. Um, so I think this is a well-stated policy. Glad we'll have it on our books.
Great.
Any, any questions or comments about it?
Thanks Pete and Anne for your work on this.
Yes, both of you. Okay, if there's no uh, further comments or questions, we'll proper vote on the entire set. And as was um, moved and seconded, all those in favor, please unmute. And verbally vote. With aye, if you're in favor of these policies.
Aye.
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 And anyone opposed? Hearing none, passed unanimously. And that takes care of our action items, I believe.
Yep, and Joe, you'll help us get those on the website tomorrow, the new policies. And we'll share them with the staff so that they are aware of the changes. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, well, we did pretty well for the amount of uh, material we had tonight and all to cover. Uh, upcoming meetings, our study session. On Thursday, December first, six-thirty in this room, we'll conduct it in the same manner perhaps. If we, especially if we have board members out.
Erin, uh, the consultant will be physically here.
Okay, so we may not need to use the owl, if that's the case. If everyone's present, if not. Just let us know if you're not gonna be available to come in. Uh, and. This, I think, has worked very well. We'll ask Pete and Anne, how, how did this work for you? Uh, being remote.
I thought it was great.
Yeah, really smooth.
Yep.
Good to hear. Well, thank you again, Erin, for facilitating that.
The library is now closed. Please check out all items that you wish to borrow. The library will reopen tomorrow at ten AM.
So community needs assessment is uh, the focus on that meeting. Um, if there's some more discussion around the uh. Parking revenue task force that you, uh, anyone wants to bring, I'll invite that uh, at that time too. Um. Our regular board meeting for December is the second Monday instead of the third Monday, so that is uh, December twelfth. The reason for that is we need to have a final approved. Uh, budget uh, in order for Claudine and Cindy to report it to the state before or about, on the fifteenth of December. So that's our. Upcoming meetings for us. Uh, the Friends and Foundation have their board meeting on Tuesday, December sixth. At eight AM here in this. Well, maybe in the Houndius room.
Knows.
In the, well, anyway, here at the library.
Uh, that, those meetings will be, the meetings will be here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So Lynn, are you?
I can be there.
You are planning on, I might try to attend also as my last. Uh, the library will be closed. Oh, yeah, also, uh, that December sixth is Colorado Gives Day. You can get on right now, uh, and do an advance for that day for your donations. Uh, whether it's to the Friends and Foundation or any other charities in Colorado, pretty much. Almost all of them are on that system now. Uh, so you can pre on a schedule. And uh, encourage you to exercise your philanthropy. Uh, the library will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, this Thursday and Friday. Have I missed anything? Any new business anyone has?
Yes, new business on Finders Keepers. There may have been a kerfuffle, but we're gonna focus on the book. And the kerfuffle was, I thought it was so clever to uh, check out a copy to all the board members, but it just mucked everything up. Eric, thank you for making this possible, really. And um, so it's just like any other book you would check out from the library. It's a three-week checkout. And um, I think you ordered, what, a hundred and fifty copies?
Yeah.
So we, we wanna circulate those between now and the end of January. So, um, I just started this weekend. I hope you find it as interesting as I do. Um, and the author is scheduled for.
February sixth.
February sixth.
Oh, non-February.
Yes, we'll be in town, so um.
That's what we usually do almost every time, uh, have the author come. So, yeah, where will that be held? Do we know yet?
TBD.
To be, okay, that's fine. Um.
But the contract is signed with the author. He's coming.
Yeah.
The question is, what's the right rent uh, venue?
Yeah.
We think we wanna get a little bit of a temperature check with the public.
Okay.
For another big public gathering. How, how many people can we, can we host?
Yeah.
So, thank you, Eric, and that's it.
Alright.
For new business.
It is eight oh two PM and I'll call the meeting adjourned. Who wants to have objection, you know, objection, stand up and leave if you can.
Bye Sarah, bye Anne, bye Pete.